Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen meeting as road commissioners for the July 29, 2025, meeting. May I have a roll call, Ms. Corbett, please?
With us tonight remotely is Jared Chadwick, Joseph Still, and myself. And then in the Select Board room is Chair Judith Whiteside, Marcus Gomes. Is Derek there? And Rich Bowen there?
He will be, Derek will be remote.
Derek will be, okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Bowen will not be attending.
Will not be attending. So Town Council, Rich Bowen, will be absent. There's Derek remotely.
Thank you, okay. May I have a pledge of allegiance, Mr. Gomes?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to ask you, what I always ask my 10th grade students, make sure your phone is off, please. We are meeting tonight as road commissioners, and we have on the agenda four items. I'm going to ask Mr. Sullivan to explain what he and I did with the list of 21 requests that we had earlier this month, which brought it down to the four that we are going to be discussing tonight. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, we just went through them. For ones, that would be road commissioner matters, and others, some that were private. Obviously, that's not something road commissioners would handle. Some were asking for signage that would be kind of beyond what your scope is, especially big electronic signage, things like that. You know, send those to municipal maintenance, take them under advisement. So really, these are the ones that would fall under the road commissioners. And then, yeah, so that was able to whittle it down to the ones that should fall within your space.
Thank you. We don't yet have a policy on how the road commissioners would make recommendations back to you, whether it be on signage or whatever it would be. I believe Ms. Corbett has drafted a proposed policy that we could operate under tonight. We wouldn't adopt it tonight. We would adopt it next week. But it would give us guidance as to how we would be making the decisions as to what we approve or what we don't approve.
And it's also letting the public know under what our framework is when we come, when we operate as road commissioners. So this is the policy I drafted, the Select Board policy for decisions made while acting as road commissioners. In most cases, the Select Board, while serving as the road commissioners for the town of Wareham, will make decisions based on the recommendations of the head of Municipal Maintenance, the chief of police, and the fire chief for each district.
So that would be how I would suggest that this board make those decisions. Again, these are the requests that have made it through the first gate, if you will, which would be Mr. Sullivan and myself weeding through what should go to municipal maintenance or what is a private road, and therefore, we can't act on. Mr. Sullivan met with both the Director of Municipal Maintenance, as well as the Police Chief, on each of the road requests in front of you. And so he will be able to explain what the recommendations, why the recommendations were made. So the first one that we would be looking at tonight would be Puritan Avenue, where residents have asked for a stop sign onto Barker Road, between Barker Road and Puritan Avenue. Mr. Sullivan? The recommendation is no from both Municipal Maintenance and Police Department.
Yeah, there's a stop sign at the end of Puritan going on to Barker, but you probably know Barker, Barker's kind of a name thorough, double yellow line going through there. When you're coming down from, down where you take a left onto Puritan, it's down a little bit of a hill there. So that'd be kind of the blind stop sign. So essentially, you'd be creating a three-way stop there. And they feel that the traffic flow is, laying a flow-through is better than trying to cause more accidents with stop signs there.
Do any of you have any questions? I don't see Mr. Still. Mr. Still, are you there? And I just can't see you.
Yes, I am here. Sorry, I'm using the different camera here on the laptop, so we won't have an image, but I can hear everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do you want to move on these after we discuss them all, one at a time? Or do you want to move on them one at a time and then move on to the next one? It's up to you guys.
I think it makes me, go ahead.
My recommendations, take, as each one gets brought up, so that's fresh in your mind. Unless you need more time, I think, take it off the list.
Thank you. Then, Ms. Corbett, I'll ask you for a motion on Puritan Avenue, request for stop signs.
I move to deny the request for a stop sign on Puritan Avenue.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to deny that request. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing no, no, we'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will notify the petitioner.
Yeah, and I think, just to clarify, that was, I think they wanted on Barker turning into Puritan.
Yep.
What the, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you. Next would be Waban Avenue. Signage request was for adding some "Go Slow Children" or "Slow Down" signs. Mr. Sullivan, I'll ask you to speak to that one.
Yeah, does everybody know where Waban Ave is? I know you've sent some photos. That runs right off of Union Ave, behind, like, where the Onset Trail, Mobile Home Park is. So, and cuts through over to the other street. So the request was "Slow Children at Play," and there, you know, I would say that's opening up a can of worms and speaking with them. They didn't feel it was necessary as a danger or anything, but, you know, we've got kids that play on every single street in this, in this town. So where, where are you going to go with it? So the recommendation was no.
Any questions of Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Ms. Corbett, then I'll accept a motion.
I move to deny the request for high speed, to "For Slow Children at Play" signs on Waban Avenue. I think, from now on, I'd like to add, based on the recommendations of the Town Administrator, the Police Chief, and the Head of Municipal Maintenance.
That's fine. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to deny, based on those recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? We'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Yes, so. Mr. Sullivan, if you could address the request for Glen Charlie Road, it's not on this agenda, but it is something that has been brought up repeatedly, and I'd like the public to know what you, what steps you have taken as a Town Administrator.
Yeah, we put, I believe, I was talking to Dave, with, I thought that we had one up already, but they've asked for a couple others. Those are the $4,000 electronic ones that give the speed, and we're not against it for there, but I think people need to know, we just don't have those in stock, nor can you always just buy those. I know we've got, we're a big budget when people look at the whole, the town as a whole, but we're pretty lean on municipal maintenance and road signage and materials. I think we give them about $60,000 a year for that. So we're, we're, our goal is to get them, two of them. Sometimes that'll require a town meeting action through, through capital planning and other such things, but that's, that's one of the things that asks the Select Board not vote to do, because if you do it, much like what we had the other week, the next morning, you're getting calls, where are the signs? Where are they going? Why aren't the signs up? What's going on with the signs? Where are the signs? It's, you know, I think if, ones like those especially, that could take a while to get in. I would just say, we can handle them. And if we feel, if the people want to vote on them, it's something we're absolutely against, we'll let you know and bring those forward.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm going to ask that we go to the 10th Street request, because if I'm reading the crowd correctly, everybody here in the room is to hear to speak on Hammond Avenue, am I correct? Hammond, Hammond Street. Is there anyone here who, is there anyone here who's not here to talk about Hammond Street? Okay, then let's do that, Ms. Corbett. Mr. Sullivan, if you could talk about 10th Street, sorry, I spent a lot of time in the sun today, and that does not do wonders for me. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, 10th Street, the recommendation from the Chief and the Municipal Maintenance Director, I'd say myself, too, is no. I drive through that a lot. If you looked at some of the photos, there's not enough room for, there's probably enough room for two cars to pass by each other. So adding a parking space on there, it is going to completely block one full section of the road. So, no, both of them felt it was a public safety hazard and would not be a good thing to do.
I would add, I drive that road virtually every other day, because I check on Lopes Playground. And if there's somebody coming the other way, it's a very difficult street to navigate as it is. So I kind of agree with the recommendation. Any questions of Mr. Sullivan? Ms. Corbett, I'll accept a motion.
I move to deny the request for handicap parking spot on 10th Street, based on the recommendations of the Town Administrator, the Police Chief, and the Director of Municipal Maintenance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to deny. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing no, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And my, and Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So it is denied. All right, now let's go to Hammond Street. Mr. Sullivan, if you would address that one, please.
Yeah, the recommendation, both the Chief and Municipal Maintenance Director, was to approve the request for no, no parking on other side, on either side of the street. They felt that that was a pretty narrow street. Looking through there with, having two-way traffic plus parking on it could be, could be an issue. So their recommendation was to approve that request.
And that would be for part, no parking on both sides, am I correct?
Right. And I have to, we give an estimate of 45 days if you were to vote favorably for signage such as that. We do expect it a lot sooner, but why we do that is exactly what we just experienced, is the constant calls. We have to understand that they aren't always available, and we don't always have the staffing for, to set those up. Again, that's just what we give as, as an estimate, but expect it a lot sooner.
Okay, thank you. I know that we received at least one letter or email from concerned citizens, and I'm going to ask that you pick a couple, two or three people, to speak, which I guess is in opposition to this recommendation, to put no parking signs up. When you come up here, I would ask that you sign your name legibly, please, and your address, and then address the board, if you choose to address the board.
Can I ask you, we're not exactly sure what the letter is. Would be my first, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, thank you. You have to identify yourself for the record, and, yeah, thanks.
So my name is Cynthia O'Neil. I live at 10 Onset Bay Lane, which is on the corner of Hammond Street and Onset Bay Lane. And all we know is that there was, there was going to be discussion of signage, but I don't even know if it's one person that wrote a letter. I don't know what the request was. I guess I'd like a little more information before I get my dander up.
Mr. Sullivan?
I have to blunt, Select Board, Whiteside Select Board Chairperson, you're the one that has the request, not me.
Yeah, it was a request because of, because of the narrowness of the road. I honestly don't have who requested it in front of me. I'm sorry. I don't have, the big black thing didn't come over tonight with the box of everything that it would have had. Sorry.
Okay. Can I, can I now just share a couple of concerns that you have?
Sure.
Okay. So my concern is there are people that don't have places to park on Hammond Street. And so if there's no parking on Hammond Street, then will they be parking on the very narrow perpendicular roads?
That's a good question.
So, you know, so that's like, that's just a concern, you know, sort of something to think about. And then I have a couple of other bullet points that we were sort of brainstorming. Yeah, so sort of where do all those cars park? And there's seven dead-end streets that are narrow, so do they, do those residents park on those streets that already don't have parking, enough parking for the residents that are living on those streets? And then, let me just pull up my list. Sorry, I just have it on the iPad. I'm assuming since you're approving no parking on either side, then if someone needs handicap parking, I'm assuming that would be denied. So where would those people park, since there's not enough parking on the side streets? You know, it's, it's going to create a problem just on all of those perpendicular roads. And I think that was it. I had some questions about permits and not, but that, that isn't the issue here. It's no parking at all. I respectfully oppose this decision. I think it's going to create a whole lot of problems for 10 weeks of summer residence. You know, there's an influx of summer residents, and then the rest of the year, it's not a problem. Even if, you know, I don't know if we looked at all of the solutions for this. And I'd ask that we maybe go back and look at those side streets and look at how they are going to be impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did put your name and address.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who chooses to address this? Ms. Dean, come on up. How are you today? Could you identify yourself for the record? Not that anybody needs you to identify yourself for the record.
Okay. When the dean wants it. I'm here with the parking. As you know, I've been involved with parking longer than I've lived in Onset. Onset's not getting any further. So my thing is, to restrict that area there, it's going to affect the church, which we only use it one hour, once a week. And where are these people going to go? We have a parking lot, which fills up very quickly, especially in the summer, and we could try to go out to the outside, but we haven't. If you do this to a certain area, you are opening up the can of worms, because now everybody's going to want to have more parking on their street, or stickers, which you have to pay for, I know, on their windows, and it's going to, it's going to be even, it's going to cause big chaos. I don't know. What do you think, Derek?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, suggest that, yeah, let's hear from all of the residents who have concerns, and then we can, we'll address them.
And I don't even live there, but I do attend. I have a few friends down there, and.
This is, this does lie within the parking program, am I correct?
Pardon?
No, it does not.
No, it does not? Okay, thank you.
It's not part of the village.
Can you give a second, can you please? Can you put the mic a little bit back?
Yeah, just back a little bit from the mic, because you're.
Too close.
Too close, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
All right, thanks. Did you put your name and address down? Thanks very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to, yes, please?
Yes, my name is Michelle Broder. I have three houses on Hammond Street. Two of the houses are rental properties. One has five residents, the other one has two. And we all depend on off-street parking. My house, the third house, is on the corner of Pecan and Hammond. Pecan is a dirt road that's washed out. It's considered a private road. It's, it's a bad road as it is. We had pushed the property back to allow, put a retaining wall to allow parking. So part of that is our property. So what, you know, if, like the past two people that spoke, there's a lot of people that depend on this off-street parking. I mean, this isn't just something that, oh, okay, we can't park there anymore. This is a real problem. What are you, what are you going to do? I mean, what can we do? Where do we park? We need this parking. And especially during the summertime, like they said, people are going to be parking on the, you know, the dead-end roads, they're going to be parking on Pecan. Pecan is where my driveway is. For me to back out of my driveway, to access my driveway, that's going to be a real problem, because people will be parking on there. I mean, I don't, it leaves us with a real problem. So what are you, what are you supposed to do? Where are we supposed to park?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, if you could, thank you, Ms. Broder. Is there anyone else who, yes, please, sir?
My name's Ernest Bouchet. I'm the Pastoral Associate at St. Margaret's St. Mary's, and I'm speaking on behalf of the pastor, who's away for the next couple of weeks. By doing this, this would increase more traffic into our parish lot, which is always, already becoming a problem every weekend and during the summer. I think the church has been very gracious in allowing people to park there, but also we don't want, you know, any abuse happening there. In the past, we've had cars that have been abandoned there. I've had a truck that was there for like two months that wasn't even registered, and I'd ultimately have that towed. So now more parking in there, and I have to, once again, become the bad guy and start towing people away, and I don't really wish to do that.
Sir, your parking lot is across the street, and it.
We technically, we technically have three lots. We have a smaller lot on Onset Bay Lane, we have the one that's on the side of the church, and we have the one across the street, Main Street.
Bordered by Grove?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And where's the other one?
Right across from the, from the church on Onset Bay Lane, and on the side of the church is handicap.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who chooses to address this board? Mr. Grassia, come forward.
My name is Ralph Grassia, and I live on Onset Bay Lane, which crosses with Hammond Street. Historically, for the last 50 years that I've been there, maybe a little longer, I don't want to say exactly, but the issues on Hammond Street have never been severe. Occasionally, on a Sunday, we'll, we'll get a couple of cars that are parked there, but they're there for 45 minutes. If you look at the street itself, that's a little bit disproportionate on the width of the street. It's a little wider than that, Hammond. The streets going down, as Cynthia said, are much narrower. And to push the cars, the lots over there are about 4,500 square feet. The houses take up most of the lots. There's going to be no place for these cars to go, except for down the side streets, and then, then more narrow, and we're going to have a bigger problem on eight streets instead of one street that's worked fine for all these years.
Thank you, Mr. Grassia.
Okay, thank you.
And you put your name in, yeah, thanks. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Bernadette Yarrow. I live at 1 Captain Carless Drive, on the corner of Hammond and Captain Carless. Thank you for your time and continued service to the community. I know the decisions that we face are not always easy, and I appreciate the thought and care you bring to your work. My family has lived in point of dependence since I was 10 years old. In all that time, we have never experienced parking issues on Hammond Street. Ours is a neighborly, welcoming community, and I believe proposed changes to Hammond Street would negatively impact that spirit. I strongly oppose any changes to the current parking on Hammond Street. These changes would severely limit the ability of family, friends, and visitors to enjoy our beautiful neighborhood, especially during the busiest and most vibrant times of the year. I respectfully urge you to vote no on any proposed parking restrictions. And I thank you again for your dedication and considering all the voices tonight, like myself. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to add their name? I kind of think we have the message, but if you want to speak, please feel free. Come on down.
Hey, my name is Tim Cox, and I live on Longwood Ave. And we have a situation on Longwood where we have parking on one side only. I just think there's several things they could do, and that does look like a narrower representation of that street, but have no parking this side. It works fine on a lot of other streets all through Onset, just, and our streets, one of them, Longwood Ave. And also the parking beach stickers, couldn't they include, you know, have the red line map they have, include maybe that street on the beach sticker thing? So if there's a problem during the summer with the residents there, they could get a beach sticker, or maybe the residents could get one gratis, I don't know. But I think if they just had parking, it is a narrow street, and one side, I think, is fine. Like, right there, that's a good picture. And you got Myrtle Street is the same one. They have parking on one side, Myrtle Street, they have Holly Street across the street, all those streets that we exit the church from, all have parking on one side, and it works out, everyone gets by.
Thank you.
I just think there's other alternatives to put no parking at all.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Cox, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes? Come on down. It's not the Wheel of Fortune, but. I went to a wonderful ribbon cutting today at Swift's Landing, also known as Littleton Drive, and it was an absolutely fabulous, fabulous occasion. Mr. Sullivan, myself, and others spoke. And I've actually invited the woman, it was a resident who spoke at the ribbon cutting, and I've asked her to come next week to the Select Board office and let, let the public hear what she had to say to us at the ribbon cutting. It was really, really nice. Totally off-topic. Go ahead.
Yeah, Carolyn O'Neil, 10 Onset Bay Lane. And I was not planning to speak, because I felt like what people had said was, was saying pretty much what I wanted to hear, except for this last gentleman coming and suggesting that perhaps one-side parking would work. Actually, I think it was Ralph that mentioned the footage on the front of everybody's places, that there's no, there's no driveways, there's no place else for people to park but in front of their own place. And if, if you go one side and you start looking at it that way, then you're going to have people conflicting with each other, or deciding to park in the church parking lot, or trying to find someplace out of nowhere. And as summer residents, that, that isn't what we're looking for. We're looking for getting along with each other. Now, as far as the narrowness of the street is concerned, which is obviously the concern of the people who are looking at it from the outside, I see Harveys coming in with the biggest darn thing you'd ever want to see, making it possible for them, not easy, but possible for them to get down all of our streets, on Hammond Street and every one of the other narrow streets in the area. Prime, Amazon Prime, they're able to maneuver anywhere you want to be. I don't see that taking away parking spaces, so it makes the street wider, probably will just mean people will drive faster. That's the way life is today. So I think that's pretty much all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil, if you don't, wouldn't mind putting, yeah, okay, thank you.
While you gave your story.
Oh, thank you, yep. Unless somebody has something different, and I don't want to cut off the conversation, but I think my peers and I have the feeling of the room, and I'm guessing that we would like to perhaps put this to further study, because you have raised some very interesting points. The recommendation from the Police Department and the Municipal Maintenance Department, where I'm sure thoroughly thought out, and probably had to do with the access for first responders. But I think it would be wise at this time for this board to have a motion, Ms. Corbett, for further study, or, and not put a date on it.
Yes, but I'd also like to share a thought that I, I think this is a good idea. I do think we need more information, and I would like part of that information, since I have gotten the impression it's due to emergency vehicle access. I'd like part of the information that Mr. Sullivan comes back with after he talks to I'd like part of the information that Mr. Sullivan comes back with after he talks to the director of municipal maintenance and the police chiefs and fire chief, or the other way around. Has there been a history of emergency vehicles not being able to get down Hammond that sort of supports this plan? So, that is a request I have. Does any, I guess, somebody, if anybody else wants to talk, or I'll make a motion?
If you don't mind me speaking about it, just to give you, this was not brought forward by the town. It was a Mr. and Mrs. Vendetti, I believe is the name, from Clearwater, Hammond, I was able to pull it up. So, I don't know if they've had an issue or not. Municipal maintenance and the chief drive down there and drive through and just say, hey, yeah, this would be tight if people are parking. If you see where the gray car is parking, that's fine, you know, that doesn't block anything. So, you know, select board, take your, you know, take your cue, see what you want to do on it. If, we're not hearing, it's the first time I've heard of any, any concerns, so if there is not too much, but I can tell you, this wasn't brought forward by police, municipal maintenance, or fire, saying there absolutely is an issue. They're just saying, hey, drive through it, it's tight. So, I think that's sort of the difference of what maybe you're asking about. If we're, you know, if they're bringing something forward, saying, hey, we're having issues, we can't get trucks down, we can't do anything, that's, you know, I think that's what you're asking. And that's nothing we've received. This came from a resident of the area requesting it.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for that clarification.
I mean, I've seen tighter roads in New Bedford.
You've seen tighter roads in Wareham and Ontepay, too.
Then I guess maybe, I mean, we have a choice. We can either vote to support their recommendation, we can vote to not support their recommendation, and we can support to, we can vote to put it to further study. So, pick one, Ms. Corbett.
Oh, good. I'm going to vote to deny.
Second.
Second, okay.
Motion made and seconded to deny the request. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. So, the petitioner will be notified. The action that we have taken tonight will be given to each of the petitioners or to the group that has petitioned for that. And again, thank you very much for your concern and your nice way of placing, putting it to us. So, have a nice evening, and I will now, Ms. Corbett...
Motion to adjourn.
He beat me to it.
Is there a second to that motion? It is not debatable.
Uh, second.
Motion made, hush, 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 please. I will now go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still? To adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We are adjourned at 7:33. Thank you very much, Wareham. We will be meeting next Tuesday.